Aren't we just here?
Yeah, that seems like it. This is supposed to be a regular thing, huh? I couldn't handle it.
We're gonna vote you out here pretty quick.
You can tell the money when it's not on.
Next meeting.
I wanna do it today.
Or did we do that already?
No, that's in December, isn't it?
Good morning. And welcome to the Planning Commission meeting today on November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. Uh, we'll start with roll call, please.
Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Patiglano.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing may be limited at the discretion of the chair. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment on something not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item three. Item three is the approval of the minutes of our November eighth meeting.
Motion that we approve the minutes of the November eighth meet, commission meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Patiglano. Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to our item four, which is our consent calendar. And, uh, I did notice on A, our two-year extension said to December tenth, two thousand eighteen. Is that supposed to be the nineteenth?
No, through the chair, that is, uh, correct. It is on the eighteenth.
Okay.
Two years.
Okay. Alright, so we're compressing two years in one year, that's good. Uh, is there any discussion on the consent? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, allow a two-year extension of time to December tenth, twenty eighteen, for a tentative subdivision map number TSM eight hundred.
Through, through the chair, the, the motion should be to approve the consent calendar.
Yeah, you can take the consent calendar.
What, 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 what?
You can just say, I have a motion to approve the whole consent calendar. You don't have to say anything else about it.
Oh, okay, well, I make a motion, we approve the calendar.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Sorry about that.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Patiglano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Well, we did, that was approving the calendar, right?
It was a little different, we don't always have the consent calendar. Okay, we'll move on to item five A. In five A, we've just been informed that we're pulling this one today, so do we need a motion now for...
Yes, through the chair, uh, staff is requesting that, uh, based on applicant request, to, uh, continue this matter to date certain, January tenth, two thousand eighteen.
I'll make that motion to continue this item to January tenth, excuse me.
Quick question, uh, it, it has been noticed, do we need to open public comment period and then close it, uh, with a continuance?
No.
Not to me.
Okay.
My motion still stands.
Uh, second, please.
To January tenth.
So, second on that continuance.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Patiglano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item B then, which is a special use permit PSP fourteen dash zero four nine.
Did we save this tree, or...
Yes, save, save the tree.
Yeah, it's River Valley RV Park, and this is, um, McClure with James Winton and Associates. And, uh, looks like we have Dana today.
We do. Good morning, Commissioner Elliot. First, uh, this request is to allow an RV park and a campground on property that's located east of Porterville. And, planning staff will be requesting that the Planning Commission adopt a mitigated negative declaration and conditionally approve special use permit PSP fourteen dash zero four nine and the mitigation monitoring reporting plan. The hearing notification map, this project was noticed according to the law, and staff has not received any communication regarding the project. Facility map, and the project is located on the north side of State Route one ninety and south of the Tulley River, and it's adjacent on the east side to the city of Porterville. The aerial photograph. As mentioned, this is SR one ninety down here, and the Tulley River is up here. The site contains one small storage building and three wells, two of which have their own accessory parcel number. These two wells are not owned by the applicant, but recorded easements across the property exist for the use and maintenance of the wells by the well owners. Zoning map, and the site is zoned O recreation and F1 primary floodplain. There would be no permanent structures allowed in the F1 zone. The surrounding properties are zoned F1 and exclusive agriculture and contain the Tulley River, scattered rural residences, open space, and agriculture. Titlement is found in section sixteen two B of the Tulare County zoning ordinance, which authorizes the filing of special use permit applications for campgrounds and RV parks in the ozone. The initial study that was prepared for the project identified potentially significant effects on the environment, and a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting plan were prepared. The ISMND indicated that although the project may have a significant effect on the environment, mitigation measures were incorporated into the project that would reduce any impact to a point where clearly no significant effect on the environment could occur. And there is no substantial evidence that the project, as revised, would have a significant effect on the environment. A notice of public hearing and availability of environmental document was published in the Porterville Recorder and mailed to surrounding property owners and all the responsible agencies. Comments were received from Porterville Developmental Center and Caltrans. Conditions of approval already addressed their concerns.
Uh, through the chair, I would like to add at that point, the designer of the project, based on Caltrans concerns and the concerns of the city of Porterville, did change the project design to be more clustered and less spread out through the site. Uh, so it was addressed through, uh, the design itself.
The project site lies within the county adopted urban area boundary for the city of Porterville, and the land use designation is commercial recreation, which is intended for campgrounds, off-road vehicle complexes, and other recreation areas where patrons usually pay to participate. This project was found to be consistent with these applicable general plan policies. Uh, the city of Porterville correspondence indicated that this use as an RV campground was appropriate for this location. Those are more consistency findings. This is the site plan. The RV park and campground will be located on an eighteen-acre portion of a thirty-six-acre site. Um, let's see. The RV park will be located on the east side of the entrance drive, so here's the RV parking area. The park would be able to accommodate up to fifty RVs, each individual space having full hookups, which is water and electrical. The tent campground area will occupy, occupy about three acres on the west side of the entrance drive area. Two restrooms and showers will be constructed within the RV camping area. Interior roadways will be constructed according to fire department standards, and future development would include commercial retail sales and RV and boat storage, neither of which requires special use permit approval because both uses are allowed by right in the ozone. And the days and hours of operation would be twenty-four seven, three hundred and five days a year. This is another aerial view of the site. Uh, potentially four employees could be hired as a result of this project. Uh, sewer service would be provided by two septic tank leach line systems, which would be engineered and approved by the Environmental Health Services Division. And water would be provided by an existing onsite well, which would be regulated as a public water system by Environmental Health.
Data delay, uh, dump into the septic system, or...
RVs.
RVs.
I don't know if they're going to have a dump site there for the RVs to empty. I would think that they would. Yes, they would.
Will that go into the...
Again, that would be for Environmental Health.
If the applicant comes up, okay.
The project would be developed in phases. Uh, the first phase would include the RV park and, uh, the RV boat storage area, and as the time progresses, they would build the additional retail and, uh, other things that are allowed by right. And, staff is recommending that your commission make two motions. The first would be to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, and the second motion would be to approve special use permit PSP fourteen dash zero four nine and adopt the resolution and the mitigation monitoring reporting.
Question, Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Dana, is this gonna include those, the, the little mini homes, RVs that we have out at Riverland, right along the river there?
Not to my knowledge.
How do we control that? Because those are considered RVs and not under our purview, because they're under five hundred square feet. We've been down this road before. So how do we stop that if that's gonna be included, if they're gonna be excluded?
About the tiny house?
Yeah.
Well, this, this is a recreational facility, so would not allow, uh, long-term residents to be located here. So, uh, our conditions of approval is to allow any residential uses.
On wheels.
Pardon?
They're on wheels.
Yeah, I know they're on wheels.
On wheels, so I think they're considered... Yeah, they're, they're not on a foundation, and they're on wheels, so...
Yeah, yeah, we, that's the whole thing. We, we could not, basically what it ended up having there at Riverland is they got a mobile home park and a flood zone. And we couldn't control it. We had no say, because the size of the vehicles did not fall into mobile home, they were recreational vehicles.
There was also a time limit, and so they would just hook up and move it, then move it back.
All of these sites are out of the flood zone.
They are in the flood zone.
Out.
Oh, they're out of the flood zone.
They're out of the flood.
Yeah, these are, these are out of the flood zone. If you look at your site plan...
Oh, I did see that, but I thought that was in the flood zone.
Flood, flood designation lines, uh...
Okay, well then that's, that's a little different story then.
Yes.
Because the, okay, when you get that, and then...
There's that site plan, I think it dis...
Alright, no, I can't see that well, but what, what's that?
Well, the...
Where is the flood zone?
The flood zone is right about in this area.
Is that the river right there?
That's a, that's a Tulley River behind it.
That's the Tulley River.
And there, you're telling me that's not, not in flood zone, and it's only about forty, fifty feet away?
Yes.
Yes.
Engineer went to great lengths to...
To say that's not gonna flood there.
Assure these sites were out of the flood zone.
Okay, alright, alright.
And, and, yes, we did go through great efforts to make sure all the pads or anything else was out, out of the flood zone.
Okay.
For many reasons.
The, one, one of the mitigating things that we did for Riverland is we had the, we had them, uh, have onsite a tow truck suitable, uh, to quickly hook up on these things and pull them out of the, out of the thing. But if we're not in the flood zone, I guess we're probably in pretty good shape.
Well, but all of these RVs, they either are motorized themselves, or else a truck or something would be pulling them into the site. They're not going to be there permanently.
Okay, so what's, what is the time limit for them to stay there?
I don't believe we established a time limit.
Okay. Well, there's just some open, open, some loose, loose ends on this thing, it seems to me that...
They're on wheels, they can be pulled out just as easily as, as a Monaco. And, I mean, a Monaco could come back too, right?
The Monaco.
You know, one of those big Class A.
Motor home.
Motor homes.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you're motorized, then that's fine, but I'm talking about small tow trailers that are pulled there, and they set up and then they, they leave.
Or a featherweight pull trailer.
Yeah. Okay, but it's not in a flood zone, so I'm, I'm not concerned at this point in time.
At the beginning, did you say there would be no permanent structures?
No permanent structures inside the flood zone.
Oh, okay. Because there is permanent structures.
There are, the pads are permanent.
And the restrooms and...
And the restrooms. Oh, way outside the flood zone.
Okay.
I had a question maybe for Hector. I noticed, I got a, a communication from the, the biology part of this, and I was just wondering, what were the conditions that were placed on their, that were recommended in their report? Was it, was it consistent with that?
Yeah, uh, included in the, are mitigations that are, you know, suggested or recommended by, by the committee.
Oh, okay.
They're included in it.
Okay, 'cause that's, I, you know, I received that a few days ago, and he was a little concerned to make sure it all got translated correctly. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, through the chair, conditions seventy-four through eighty-seven are, seventy-four through eighty-seven are biological mitigation measures.
Okay.
I'm familiar with this area because I lived up above it in Springville. It is below the dam, but this, this area right in here is like a plateau. It sits, it sits above the Tulley River. If you look at the Tulley River, if you're there, kinda down, you know, it's not to say the river couldn't flood, but, um, it, it would be a pretty hefty flood to get up on that plateau and cause it to be a floodplain. Okay, I'm satisfied.
Is there another RV park just down the street from there?
There is one just east of here.
I'd like to go back to the question, Mr. Whitlatch posed, about the, um, septic drains, the septic. I know there's two different things, I think, what he's talking about. There's hookups, that is your dump, then there's a dump station, but every one of them have a hookup for everyone, every... So, that goes into where? That's what Mr. Whitlatch was...
For sewage?
Uh-huh.
I need to know if every pad had a hookup for sewage disposal?
Yes.
No, I don't, no.
And she said only utilities and water.
Water and electricity only.
Oh, only water and electricity, so it is not gonna have the sewage dump, uh, set, hookup?
It might have a main.
Yeah.
Or when people are exiting the park.
And dump.
Dump.
Okay, okay, alright, huh. Okay.
Thanks for the Mr. Whitlatch, that was nice.
Every once in a while, I give you the respect you give.
Thank you. Once a year.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions for Dana? Alright, this is a public hearing, so does anyone wanna comment on this particular project? Even though we know your name, please state your name and address for the record.
Name is Jim Winton, business address is one fifty West Morton in Porterville. Good morning. I wanna start here. We, we actually started on this project somewhere in the middle after it actually been in the process for considerable amount of time. And, uh, the site plan that you saw really isn't the current site plan. Although the, basically the description Dana gave of all of the facilities and things on the plan, I think are reproduced here, maybe in just different locations. This, I, I doubt if you have a slide, you have a slide of this one? Is similar environmental...
Through, through the chair, if, uh, we could share that with all the, the Dana, if you could take it from I've been there, and then through Velma, pass it around to the Planning Commission.
Uh, that drawing includes two floodway lines. One is the FEMA floodway line, the other one is the state water board floodway line. They aren't in the same position. All of the proposed improvements for the facility are outside of those floodlines. There's a detail, I think in the lower left corner of the, of the actual pad, it shows the hookups being sewer water and electricity. So she did plan on providing sewer hookups to each pad. Although, to answer Bill's question, a little more detail, I think there probably will be a dump station just for intermittent use and to make it available if it gets to the point where there's so much business, there isn't vacant places to use for that purpose. So, uh, there is a, there is a proposed, uh, sewer hookup for each of those, uh, each of those pads.
Excuse me, so then where is that sewer going?
Pardon me?
So where are all those hookups going? That's...
There'll be a septic tank and leach line system, and there's conditions in the, uh, conditions of approval for uh, design approval and permitting by the health department. Let me see, trying to remember other questions that came up. I, I got into these conditions, and there are a considerable number of conditions, but when I actually started reading through them, I saw about a third of them are reproduced because they're listed as standard conditions, and they're also in the mitigation measures and keyed to the, uh, negative declarations, so it's, uh, there's not as, quite as many handbrings to go through as it looks like when you first look at the report. I don't think I have anything else to add at, at this point. Uh, I'm sure you might have some additional questions, maybe I can respond to. Maybe I'll give you time to look, look at the site plan.
Well, I might add that the, this site plan is the one that was in the staff report.
Yeah.
I mistaken.
So, I mean, the, these are really nice things for Tulare County, because it gives our visitors a place to stay. But my question is that, uh, a lot of them, you're able to store your RV there. Is there an RV storage area, or no RV? They, uh, she, uh, I'm speaking to the applicant, who by the way couldn't be here today, she apologizes. Uh, had that on the original plan, and she had me remove it when I did the revision. So, uh, there, there is other RV storage available up and down Highway one ninety. There's storage facility at the lake, there's a storage facility at Little Mondo Home Park just above the lake. There's one below the lake, so there is, uh, RV storage available, uh, that actually caters to the, uh, to the visitors to lake success. This, uh, Kings River, um, facility we were talking about, they basically got around the RV thing by fact that they had two wheels and they had a license plate. And that they would move them to a different location for the, whatever the maximum of time. So is there any plans to, to, I don't, I don't see how you could, but... Well, I, I don't think there's any plans, but I just listened to a discussion about how, even if there is, you don't know what you can do about it. So I, there is no plans. If there's a way to restrict the time, which you probably will, or anything that would make you more comfortable, I'm sure that, uh, Mary wouldn't object to that. Like I say, but I, I, I'm kinda hearing that you got a problem and you don't know how to fix it, so I don't know. Well, I think I'm in favor of places for people to come stay, but when they become permanent residences, that's when I start to have a problem. And, uh, 'cause it takes away from what I believe was the original tent, was to provide visitors to Tulare County a place to, uh, you know, stay while they visit here. When you start putting up these little wood cabins with wheels under them, uh, and even the Kings River one, this last year, half of it flooded. I saw all those supposedly RVs sitting in two feet of water, so, uh, that, that's my problem is, and I'd like it to say, to be a true RV park, not a place that people buy things if they really never move, so that's my, then the rest of it looks...
Well, we've certainly had that experience in three of us too, and one of them... One of that, one of our parks in three of us has evolved to half and half, so... I know something like this would, would have a lot of, um, opposition anywhere in three of us right now, 'cause we have some, so... Was there any opposition to this one? I didn't notice any letters or anything.
There was not.
None whatsoever, huh? I mean, it's certainly an interesting site.
Well, through the chair, we could add a condition that no vehicles will be allowed to locate on the site for any more than six months. I think that would make sure that they would have enough vacation time without, uh, being allowed to stay there permanently. And that way, if there is ever an issue, like that other case,
Yeah.
that they can't, they can move them around for six months.
That seems reasonable.
And that way, they don't become permanent.
Is that okay with the...
Yes.
And they can't get around it by just moving it, uh, twenty feet away to a storage yard?
Twenty feet outside of the site area?
Just, just add in there that they have to be removed and stay off the site for thirty days or forty-five days, just...
Yeah, that doesn't...
Fine, they have to not be there. Thanks, Jimmy, just solved our problem.
So we did it thirty or forty-five?
I'll send the bill.
Yeah.
And is that okay with the applicant? I mean, can...
Yes.
Yes, they've been in process since two thousand twelve. I'm sure they wanna get this over with.
Well, people need a place to stay when they come visiting. You know, there's a lot of retired folks, I don't happen to be one, but, you know, they live in it. They just move around the country, so... It's interesting, this particular layout, not, not particularly where the spaces are located, but actual space design. She was on a motorhome trip for several months, and it was Alder Acres in Coos Bay, Oregon. And she picked up some little flyers, and she said, "This is what I want." This was really a nice park. What we ended up, that's where that one came from.
I broke down there once, so I know Coos Bay very well.
Yeah, yeah, it's beautiful.
It is.
They all have the same...
Well, this could be beautiful too.
Yeah.
On, uh, condition number twenty-four, I'm trying to make this work with what you're saying, Jim. It says, "No sewage disposal system shall be located in any other lot, any lot other than the lot that is site of the building structure or premises served by such facilities." How does that allow you to put it by space?
On somebody else's property, we have to have an easement, and it has to be included within that ownership. Dana said yes.
You know, I'm, I have a little bit of concern having so many leach lines and septic tanks that close to the river, I, I, but I'm sure it's engineered. Do we, do we know that, and it's up on a bluff, I, I'm told. Do we know the depth to, to groundwater from there? I mean, I, there's gotta be some room to clean up the nitrates and stuff before it gets to the water table.
I'm, I'm not sure what the depth to groundwater is. I will tell you that I know this is a good water bearing area. This is kinda in the west of the infamous East Porterville. This is kind of in the west of the infamous East Porterville area, only on the other side of the river. And two or three of the wells on site are actually serving agricultural properties on the south side of Highway 190. So it's good water bearing area, but I, if I did, I don't remember what it was. I didn't, I didn't look at the depth to groundwater. There is a requirement though, five feet below the, below the leach lines till you get to the highest groundwater levels. That would be, have to be part of, kind of the health department, I think.
Yeah, yes, through, through the chair. Condition 23 cites that any new sewage disposal system shall be designed by an engineer, registered environmental health specialist, geologist, or other competent persons. So these issues that may have arisen in the past were under previous qualifications and might, might not have been done by engineers historically for other sites we've been discussing, but these will be done by a registered engineer. This will be a, a professionally designed septic and leach line system with full knowledge of depth to water, groundwater and everything else. So, and that'll be approved by environmental health.
I'm not requiring this, Jim, but you know, I think in the future, I like the system that costs the lakes. Processes the sewage and then it pumps it out on some trees and, but not for this one, but in the future, I like the looks of those. It just doesn't go off underneath the ground someplace, so...
That, that's a, a good system when you have constant flows or dependable.
Really?
This is going to be real intermittent?
I see.
I don't think it's going to do the, it'll still look the same, but I don't think it'll do the same job. I don't think it'll work properly when you're dry and then there's a big surge and then it's dry again.
Thank you.
I would think there'd be times of the year that that won't be completely full.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure most of the year it won't be completely full. It could be full on weekends, but I don't think it's going to be full all the time.
Well, it sure looks appropriate for that site if it works like this. All right, is there anybody else like to comment on this project?
I understand.
Okay.
Bill Bennett, 26965 Avenue 140. I presently have two of the wells that are on the property. My first, I've got a numerous question here. The first one is, I need a clarification of a floodplain. Is that based off of a hundred-year flood period? Or what is the clarification of that? Because under the Tulie Water Basin, that is considered a floodplain zone.
The definition I saw on the site plan was the Department of Water Resources floodplain, and that's a hundred-year, Jim, I believe? Or I think they've upped it to 200-year floodplain. But yes, that's a hundred-year floodplain by DWR for the floodlines on the site plan.
Okay. Second question is the standing water. There was a question asked of that. It is 10 to 14 feet standing water in that area. Second is the enforcement of, I heard of a clarification of six months. Who enforces that? Because presently the, and Mr. Witten is, and has had this discussion numerous times because there's numerous RV parks in Tulare County. Is there a county ordinance or is it by each site RV on the length of state? And who enforces that once that's put in place?
Through the chair, if I may. Basically, the enforcement would be coming upon the county enforcement department, and it's usually based on complaints. So it's a complaint-driven. And as far as no, there is no ordinance. This is a use permit and the conditions of approval for this use permit would dictate how this project would operate in the future.
Okay, because I know that one of the comments made about a present RV park that's just up the road, that is permanent residency there.
Hence, through the chair, these conditions would allow the enforcement mechanisms to have those vehicles removed that would stay more than six months and make sure they're off the site for 30, 30 days?
30 to 45, I heard, yes.
So if it, if it pleases the, the commission, maybe we could extend that to 45.
So then it's a county, or not a county, it's on the use permit, so we understand. So when we start writing these letters, trust me, it's, we're already seeing the other RV park that's less than a mile away and what the conditions are there today.
And through the commission, the owner has wanted to operate this as a recreational establishment for a while now. We haven't heard anything otherwise. We are very aware of the other long-term recreational vehicle parks that we have. So I think these conditions should help remove some of our concerns about that. But again, if there are any enforcement issues in the future, any phone calls, letters will be addressed and enforcement will go out if there's phone calls in the future.
Okay. My concerns is, and I heard something about the Caltrans. Is there a recommended turn lane to go into there?
I do believe the site designer changed the entrance based on the letter from Caltrans to match what their concerns were. Correct.
And how is that addressed? Because I, I, I travel that, going in and out of that property sometimes, a couple times a day. That is a stretch of 190 where there isn't any, it's, it's heavily traveled at certain times of the day, and I can't tell you how many times I've almost been ran into trying to turn going east-north into this property because of the flow of traffic through that area.
Through the chair, this is a public hearing and the person in, for the project can come up afterwards to answer these questions exactly. I'd like the engineer to answer that question exactly, how the new design addresses your concerns and Caltrans concerns.
Okay. And that's all I had, thank you.
This is one of the first projects we've had since that troublesome project on the Kings River, and that was probably how many years ago? 15 years ago or...
First started. Just you and I were the only two on the, at the time, right?
I've been here almost 20 years, so I hadn't forgot, so...
Nor I, experiencing, gone through the, the twice or three times that the water has gone over the spillway at Lake Success and that area did flood. So I was, been living there my whole life and I've seen that happen. So that was kind of why I was asking that question regarding the floodplain.
Probably.
And then there's, on the long-term, there is asking for retail in there? Is that correct?
That's correct, but I think that request has been removed. That was the initial request to have commercial facility, but in this last site plan, it has been removed. And again, I'd like the engineer to come up and answer these questions exactly how it's, the project's changed since we first started.
You want to see that map we passed around?
Does it vary from the present...
Not much.
Except a, set of two rows or three rows?
On that same northeast portion of the property? Because that...
I think so.
Yeah, because knowing the location of the wells that we have, that would not infringe on our ability to assess those pipelines or access those pipelines. And here's the point of entry.
So as stated, the condensed site and all that is there now as far as permanent structures would be the clubhouse, the showers, laundry, and the office.
Okay.
And the septic systems and leach lines would be located on the southern portion of the site, closest to State Highway 190, furthest away from the floodplain, as it says on the map.
Yes. Okay. All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, the entrance, actually Caltrans installed that drive approach or the...
Can you state your name one more time?
I'm sorry. That's my name. Jim Winton, 150 West Morton in Porterville. That was part of the highway project. They put that, that road approach in and it did fit their standard at the time. However, my experience been, has been up here that every time you do anything, Caltrans gets a chance, they have you upgrade to their new standard. So I'm expecting that they will ask us for an encroachment permit for an improvement if the site distance, there's, there's two things to do with a drive approach. One is site distance, and that's based on speed. And the other is grade slope. And this is an issue here, it's, it's flat, so there is no relationship to grade. So we would have to go out and actually, their standard shows where the car is parked and how far in each direction it has to be able to see. So I think probably for 55 miles an hour here, it's probably up around 1,000 feet or something like that. I'm, I'm not quoting that as, but it's in that range. So, and this drive approach does provide access to this piece of property as well as the property immediately to the east. So it's actually dual-purpose. The one to the east right now is vacant, or I guess vacant, it's just used for grazing. The floodlines on here, the, the state designated floodway, which is the furthest end of the property, was determined in public hearings rather, rather than by science, I guess. They go back several decades and they're plotted on aerial photographs and they had meetings and people in the area testified as to where the water went. And that's how they developed that particular line. The book that it's in says it's the 100-year floodline, but there's no book of calculations that supports the return interval on that storm. The FEMA line, however, was developed based on flows in the river. And these two lines are based on a hundred-year flood, but they have another purpose. They don't allow you to build anything within those areas that would disrupt the flow within the channel. So besides being a hundred-year floodline, they also prohibit any construction within that area that would be above ground. So just because the floodline is on there, that means the area that's being protected, it doesn't always mean it's the limit of the 100-year flood. In this particular case, however, it is. The rest of the property is in what they call shaded zone X, which is the 500-year flood limit line, and the X zone, which has no shading on it, which there is no designation, obviously beyond the 500-year storm. Oh, the commercial, she, she originally had planned to provide commercial just for residents' use within the people that were staying there and decided that probably wasn't going to be worthwhile and more trouble to try and run than it was worth, have to have employees and actually staff something like that. So she just asked me to take it off. So as of right now, I don't think there's any plans for commercial.
So the commercial was probably like a little grocery store?
Yeah, it would be a...
Any mart thing?
Yeah, yeah, we have some any minute marks now. I don't... If that was it, that's...
What about propane? Do they plan to sell propane there or would it take another permit?
No, I think they're just, there's eagle feather trading posts just up the highway by the lake, they have propane, cheapest gas in town.
Question, Jim. We, we had heard testimony that the water tables between, high, high water is between 10 and 14 feet. Does that give you any other thoughts regarding the design of the current septic system?
Well, I think we'd have to check it and see where it is. There must be some kind of abrupt change in, I say abrupt, some kind of change in geology as you go south, because you don't, we're too far south, which is probably why Mr. Bennett has these wells up here and not back in the grove. It's a lot easier to find the water here. So I think we just have to see where the groundwater is. 10 feet would work, but that's the absolute probably minimum. You know, if we actually came up with something that was 14 to 15 feet deep, we could meet the requirement with a comfortable margin. But until we do the pothauling, I'm not sure what...
Is there any, any other means to treat this rather than just to put it in the septic and leach lines?
Well, I think there's, yeah, I think there's means, but there's means, there's ways you can address the separation record, distance requirement. And that would be to put the disposal system in a mound system, which would basically be the discharge and the leach line pipes would be somewhere just below ground level instead of three or four feet deep. And that would of course pick up three to four feet if it was a separation problem. But other than that, you don't get very much, you don't reduce the effluent when you put in a treatment facility and you really don't reduce the nitrates. So you see, you, I guess you still have to get rid of the same amount of effluent somewhere. There's a big treatment plant at River Island Golf Course and one of the fairways is all just under the surface, two-inch pipe that distribute the sewage, just, just under the root zone. But there's still the same amount of effluent that has to be disposed of.
Through the chair, again, this will be, whatever system is designed would be improved by environmental health. So it's not a real issue of degradating the groundwater or potentially the Tulie River water, and at least not within allowable sta, it'll all be within allowable standards. So they, I know your concerns from the Kings River project, that we don't have those same issues here as far as the floodplain, and we have much more updated standards when that, that project was approved. Regional Water Quality Control Board standards that have been adopted by environmental health.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to comment? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jamie Wilson. My address is 27114 Avenue 140, and I'm a partial owner of one of the agricultural wells on the property as well. I have the same concerns Mr. Bennett does about the traffic safety in, ingressing, ingressing on that road. It's a really bad stretch where people pass all the time, day and night, and that road is very busy at night with the casino being up above us. So it's a very dangerous place to be pulling in and out with a travel trailer. My main concern was the commercial retail space that was listed in the original plan, and I just wanted clarification about, it said it was going to be a store open 24/7, and I really just wanted clarification that wasn't going to be a minute mart on the highway, brightly lit 24 hours a day.
Well, for, for the record, that's no longer part of this project.
Yeah, it was taken up.
No commercial store.
That was my major concern.
Okay, thank you. Well, if there are no other comments, then we'll close the public hearing. And we, we do have a new condition in this to note for anyone that is thinking of making a motion. Any other discussion?
I'd like Aaron to state that condition. Like, error to state that condition?
Someone should.
Through the chair.
It's a little of a legal degree, so.
Yeah, on the fly. There's other people in this room that have legal degrees, too. Through the chair, I do believe that we had stated that all recreational vehicles will be allowed to stay on the site for six months, and that if they are removed after six months, that they will vacate the site for forty-five days and not be allowed back on the site for forty-five days.
I think it's also worthwhile to note that, you know, we didn't have objections to this, but it is the responsibility of, of the you folks in the neighborhood there to kind of keep an eye on things. And if there is problems, we want to hear about it, no doubt.
We have a very good code compliance.
Yes, we have a very good code enforcement group in our building department division who reacts immediately to calls from the public.
So, we'll entertain that motion now.
I'll make that first, the motion that we approve the adopt a mitigated negative declaration for special use permit number PSP 14-049 in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and State Equal Byline for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act of 1970.
Second thought?
Roll call?
Dong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
No.
Willatch?
Yes.
Hittigliano?
Aguilar?
Yes.
Now, we need a separate motion on the special use permit.
And this is where that condition would be stated, right?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve the special use permit number PSP 14-049, in addition to the condition of the forty-five days as previously stated, and adopt the resolutions and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan establishing findings and conditions of approval for the project.
Second thought motion.
Roll call?
Dong?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
No.
Willatch?
Yes.
Hittigliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. And we can move on then to our director's report.
Through the chair, Aaron Bach, chief planner, Tulare County Resource Management Agency. Mike Washam was at an EDC meeting this morning and was unable to attend today. What I would say is that our, our plans that were approved last week are moving forward to the board for approval on December 5th. They had the waiver of the first reading yesterday, and they were not removed for any future comments, so we're definitely moving forward on that. Similar with the ACFP, no comments last night from what I understand, as far as the waiver of the first reading on consent. So, both those projects are, are moving forward. We are now proceeding at full speed with Three Rivers. That's next on the agenda along with Goshen. So, those, we anticipate being done with those in fairly short order here. Hector, if you want to tell us any updates on when the release for those environmental documents maybe? So, yeah, we'll look at a December release for the EIR for Three Rivers, and shortly thereafter, Goshen. That's all I really have for you today. Have any questions of, of us?
Seeing none, I'll wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and then we'll adjourn then till December 13th.
Both these kind of meetings.